Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order. Please, everybody silence your cell phones. We do have a quorum. Counselor Phillips is away on vacation. I'd ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor.
Our Father in Heaven, as we begin this council meeting here this evening, we are grateful for all the many blessings that has bestowed upon us. We are grateful for this country and the freedoms that we enjoy here. We're mindful of those who serve in armed forces and protect those freedoms that we enjoy. Pray that thou would watch over and protect them and their families. We're also grateful for this beautiful community in which we live and pray that, and are grateful for those who serve here, especially our first responders, notably our police officers and our firefighters, and pray that thou would be with them, protect them, guide and direct them and their families. We're thankful for the many dedicated employees we have here in this community and pray that thou would bless them as well. And as our youth graduate from high school tomorrow evening, we are also grateful for them and for the potential which they have and ask that thou would bless them with wisdom and with guidance as they go on in a new chapter in their lives, that they might be guided and directed and reach their potential. We pray now that thou would, thy Spirit would be with us in this meeting, that there'll be a spirit of cooperation and understanding as we look at items that affect the members of this great community in which we live. And we ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the Town Council. The Town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard and called to the public and individuals are limited to three minutes. We have two requests from people to sit for us tonight. Mr. Gordon Claridge, if you'd come on up to the podium, please.
Good evening. I know some requests are easy to make but difficult to fulfill. I think this is an easy one, I hope. I'm a fisherman. I live in Pine Top and I fish regularly at Woodland Lake Park. I love the pier. It's a beautiful place. There are two restrooms situated on basically the opposite sides of the lake from where the pier is located. And for us, for myself or my handicapped friend, for us to use the nearest restroom involves me picking up all my tackle, taking his wheelchair and breaking it down and driving the 2.7 miles, 0.727 miles to the restroom and then coming back and hopefully all of our belongings are still there. What I'm requesting is, and hoping we can do a study on this to see if it is fulfillable, is to put a single or a double portable toilet facility near that end parking lot so that when you're fishing and nature calls, you can just walk off the pier or I can push his wheelchair off the pier to the portable facility. He can use it and we can come back without having to risk the loss of our equipment or his chairs and things like that. I've done some measurements and you have a drawing there showing the distances to the east restroom, that the south restroom is a little more distant. But it's 0.27 miles if you take the road. If you take the footpath, it's two miles, 0.2 miles, but you have a hill to climb up, which is impossible for him to do and almost impossible for me to do. So that's my request and I hope that it can be fulfilled.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention tonight. I think maybe we can talk to our staff and see what can be done. So thank you.
Perfect. That's why I'm here.
Enjoy the fishing. Kenny Cale.
Mayor Irwin and city council members. My name is Cale and I live in the county. I have most of my life, actually. Whether it's a half a block away or a block and a half away or 30 yards away from the city. But I don't have a voice on the county or on the city. But I do want to address an issue I think that's coming up and that is access to Rainbow Lake. I think that a natural nature connection to the lake should be available to everybody in the community. Right now, that's available only to people who happen to live in or own land along the lakefront. Now, most of those people live in gated communities, so we don't have an opportunity to see that. And the rest of them really have no keep out signs, no trespassing. And the city, I understand, could purchase land and make it an island and annex it to the city. My neighbor across the street down in Mesa told me this and he works for annexation for Mesa. He was really impressed that this is a possibility, a real possibility, that we can create something that's going to be generational and that's going to be nature. And I think that that's what Pine Top Lakeside is about. If we're going to say tourism, it's not a concrete ramp that's pitted and a potholed asphalt parking lot with aluminum pier. That's not Pine Top. This picture that you see, that is. And that was available to me when I was a young man. If you want to consider this opportunity to purchase a lot of land that would generate urban renewal, I see it as an opportunity where it'll expand and produce monetary benefits to the city so that we can be a real city, you know, where we can get revenue. And I see that opportunity. I know change will come. You all know that. And sometimes we hate to see communities and relationships go, but eventually there's going to be somebody who takes that land. I hope it's not somebody who puts a gate up and disallows anybody from seeing it. I hope it's an opportunity where families can go down and enter the lake through kayaks and paddle boards where you could sit out on a restaurant and eat a hamburger or have a craft beer, listen to the geese coming in. That's my hope. As a government, we don't have an urban renewal in the county. But once you buy that land, that changes things. You could create an urban renewal plan for that area. That land's valuable. The housing on it isn't and somebody will see that soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Item C is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion unless a member of council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members, however, may ask questions without removal of the item. Items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. And we have one item on our consent agenda tonight. Are there any questions from the council? Vice Mayor.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded and is our further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D on our agenda tonight is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Our first item, D1, is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation of White Mountain Nature Center 20 Year Celebration 2024. Counselor Snitzer.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, the White Mountain Nature Center 20th Anniversary, May 19th, 2024. Whereas the White Mountain Wildlife and Nature Center, WMNC, was initiated 20 years ago by Mary Ellen Bidorf, who conceived the idea and formed a committee of community leaders to make it happen. And whereas in a few short years of growth, the White Mountain Nature Center launched a series of weekend nature education programs. At first in a 10 by 10-foot borrowed tent in a borrowed field, then in a 50 by 50-foot tent on a five-acre site, which the White Mountain Nature Center was in the process of buying with strong donor support. Those five acres were followed by leasing five more acres. In recent years, five additional acres with several major buildings were made available by Dave Renner creating the present day Nature Center and his 15-acre campus. And whereas the growth has continued through the years despite challenges like reduced public events due to COVID, recent years saw the addition of a raptor rehabilitation facility and major facility improvements to enhance programs, including patios, carpeting, audiovisual equipment, and more. And whereas over the past 20 years, the White Mountain Nature Center has greatly expanded, both in its facilities and in the services it offers to the community. Today, the Nature Center provides a wide range of educational programs for all ages, including educational displays, nature hikes, a nature store, and it provides a meeting space for many organizations in the community. And whereas 2021 saw a particular milestone for the White Mountain Nature Center, a joint development agreement with Land on Sky Raptor Experiences. This is culminated in the construction of a world-class raptor center which will celebrate its official opening along with the White Mountain Nature Center 20th Anniversary celebration. The free daily bird shows have quickly become a highlight for visitors and local people alike. And whereas the Nature Center has announced that it will officially celebrate their 20-year anniversary on May 19th, 2024, and with grateful recognition that it has become such a treasured asset to our entire community, now therefore I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2024, as the White Mountain Nature Center 20th Anniversary and applaud the Nature Center for helping to build and enhance the community's social, environmental, and educational values for children, families, and town residents. I would encourage all town residents to explore the White Mountain Nature Center and invite all of you to attend the 20th Anniversary Celebration on Sunday, May 19th, 2024. In witness where, unto, in witness, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona. Stephanie Irwin, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Snitzer. And again, thank you to the Nature Center for all that they've done and brought to our community. It's an amazing asset, I know. Counselor Craig Baum, Counselor Snitzer, and many others have been heavily involved in that, so thank you. Item D2 is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation of National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Office of Mayor Stephanie Irwin, Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona Proclamation, National Public Works Week, May 19th through May 25th, 2024. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, parks, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, parks, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works professionals and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Sterling Buse, for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim the week, May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals, managers, and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done on this 16th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I think we all know that we have the best public works crew on the mountains. So thank you, Matt, and all of your crew for all that you do for us.
Item D3 is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation of National Travel and Tourism Week, also May 19th through 25th, 2024. Whereas travel has a positive effect on Arizona and the state's economic prosperity and image abroad, it also impacts business productivity and individual travelers' well-being. And whereas travel to and within Arizona provides significant economic benefits for the state, generating $28.1 billion in direct visitor spending by travelers and travel supports 179,100 jobs in Arizona. And whereas travelers' spending directly generated tax revenues of $3.98 billion for federal, state, and local governments. These funds help support essential services and programs. And whereas leisure travel accounts for more than 85% of all domestic trips taken to Arizona, which spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. And whereas the Town of Pine Top Lakeside is a tourism-driven economy and we must communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth and benefits our businesses and community. And whereas Pine Top Lakeside is known as Arizona's recreation destination and is the gateway to the White Mountains of Arizona. And whereas Pine Top Lakeside recognizes the dedicated staff of the Community Services Department for the numerous events created to not only involve residents of Pine Top Lakeside, but to encourage tourism to our town. Now therefore I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, call upon the citizens of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside to observe the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, and thank our Community Services Department for all that they do to promote tourism and urge all citizens to recognize the role this industry plays in our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at the Town Hall of Pine Top Lakeside this 16th day of May, 2024. And I just want to give a special thank you to Tony, Annie, and Rob and our team in our Community Services Department for all that they do. So thank you, Tony.
Item D4, Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation of National Wildfire Community Preparedness Month, 2024. Counselor Heisler.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Town of Pine Top Lakeside is committed to saving lives and protecting the community through prevention, preparedness, and emergency response in a timely, courteous, and effective manner. And whereas National Wildfire Awareness Month dedicates the entire month of May to prevention and preparedness that focuses on what residents can do around their homes to help protect against the threat of wildfires. And whereas, as the weather becomes warmer and wildland vegetation or fuels begin to dry out, it is time to plan for wildfires. And whereas residents have the power to protect the part of the community that means the most to them by firewising their properties, by eliminating vulnerabilities in the home ignition zone, particularly in the immediate five-foot zone around their residence. And whereas hardening homes to ember intrusion and creating defensible space to address vulnerabilities such as firewood piles, unmaintained landscape, and lawn debris around the residence makes a difference in preventing the spread of fires. And whereas it is essential to educate our residents on their part in prevention of wildfires and how to protect the community and avoid loss and tragedy. Now therefore I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as National Wildfire Community Preparedness Month in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done on this 16th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Heisler. We'll move on to item D5 appropriately. We have a presentation from Katrina Jenkins, the Navajo County Public Health Service presentation of the 2024 wildfire season and the Ready, Set, Go program. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. It is such a pleasure and very timely to have that proclamation read. I love that so much. Thank you again for having me and I have some friends with me that are also going to speak. I also want to thank Supervisor Donna Fay-Whitesinger for coming to support. So 2024, we're here. It's that time of year again where I get to come before you and talk about the thing that makes us keep me awake at night. I'll put it that way. So what's in store this year? Well, let's take a look. These are the outlooks for the next several months. We started in April and as you can see, the upper left corner there, there was no severe risk. There's always risk, as we know, whenever you're in a wooey. Then as you move into May, June, and July, the red creeps into the southeastern corner of Arizona, but we really didn't see it creep up to the northern part. This is a forecast, so we always want to make sure to let folks know that while this is a forecast, there will be fires and we want to stay vigilant. But it looks pretty good from this picture. So that being said, we want to go into a discussion about restrictions. Restrictions could happen. They could not. Every year, our White Mountain Fire Coordination Group gets together in the early spring and we start discussing all of the data points and the plans that we have in place and have had for several years. The databases include the energy release components, fuel, the various fuel types. We have the weather. Our subject matter experts from the National Weather Service join these calls. We have our local, state, and federal forest officials join these calls and provide their subject matter expertise too. So while we do have that constant little hair on the back of our head standing up this time of year, we do make restrictions decisions based on science and data provided by real-life officials. It's not something that we base out of fear. So that being said, what can we do in case of the next step? If we do have a fire, which as we know, we had them last year with the Cottonwood Ridge Fire. We'll probably have a few starts this year. It's always in the back of our minds. So we want you to learn more about ready, set, and go. Ready is having that kit that we talk about all the time. We used to say 72-hour kit. I want folks to have a minimum of a week or a month, preferably, if not a year's supply of all the things that they would need to be self-sustaining. We can't rely on, as we learned during COVID, the logistics, you know, getting those supplies up here always in a timely manner. They will come, but it may take some time. So I want you to be self-sufficient and not have to worry about, how am I going to get my next meal? Where's my water coming from? All of those kinds of things. In addition to that, if you haven't already, and we have a pretty good group already signed up in our alert system, please take a moment or a few and sign up for the Ready Navajo County Alert System. It's on our website at navajocountyaz.gov/ready. Finally, make some plans and Councilmember Heisler talked about the defensible space and we'll talk about that in a minute as well. But make some plans for both your property, but also your finances and your communication with your family, friends, and neighbors. Those are very simple steps that anybody can do and there are a lot of resources, again, also on our website that I mentioned previously. Next is get set. Set means there is something going on nearby and you've heard about it and you're paying close attention to those, what we call vetted official sources of information. This is either the city's page, our fire friends pages on social media, the emergency management page. We have a website, 311info.net. That website will always share emergency information and the updates. Again, if this is, a set mode is called for, we will set out alerts through the Ready Navajo County Alert System. In addition to all of these other avenues of getting communication out, we will talk to our radio partners as well as our print media. So we ask that if you are not sure that you are going to have enough time to evacuate or you think you're just concerned in general, go ahead and leave early. There's no saying you have to wait until we call go. This isn't one of those things where you're going to get penalized like you would as a kid when we did ready, set, go. You don't have to go back to the beginning. We're going to let you go as early as you feel is most comfortable, especially if you are someone that has an access and functional need or large animals or anything like that. Next is go. This is just what it means. Go means go. Don't wait. If we have sent out an alert, it is official. You're not going to get, probably have time to get a whole lot of those things packed up. So hopefully you've already done it and set, if not in ready. But in case you haven't already done it, make sure to pack your medications. Take your pets with you. Don't leave them at home thinking you're going to get to come back in. You may not get emergency services if you choose to stay. That's important because that means our fire services, our medical services, and our law enforcement services are all going to be tied up with this evacuation and whatever is causing it. It could be something else other than a fire. So I want folks to understand, you're kind of on your own. Also, you can't leave your property. Once you refuse to evacuate, you are to stay on your property. Once you refuse to evacuate, you are to stay on your property for the duration. If you leave your property for any reason and you are found out, our law enforcement officials will escort you out of the area and provide the information to where the closest local shelter is. You will not be allowed to go back in for medication, pets, clothing, or anything else. So please listen to us. When we tell you to go, we mean go. We're going to ask you to follow directions from our public safety personnel, whether they're volunteers or uniformed law enforcement. Okay, enough preaching. Here's the fun part. Smokey Bear lives within us all. This is the motto this year for the campaign for Smokey Bear for fire, wildfire awareness. Smokey Bear is 80 years old this year. For 80 years, we've had a bear to tell us how to be careful with wild, with fire in the woods. I'd like to enunciate that a little bit just because 80 years. That's a long time for this poor bear to have to repeat that message. We love him, and he's great, but he's probably getting a little tired of being a broken record. So, what you can do, and it's never, you're never too young and you're never too old to help prevent wildfires. Using your ashtray, don't drag the chains. I found these great little tools are a piece of plastic, and it holds your little chains up over your trailer hooks, and it costs about eight bucks, less than $10, can keep you from preventing, it can prevent, help you prevent a wildfire. Maintaining your vehicles. When I travel across the county, I see so many vehicles that have things dragging underneath or close to dragging underneath. Let's get that stuff maintained because that also can spark a wildfire as it drives down our asphalt. Okay, oop, sorry, big one. Put out your campfires. All fires should be maintained at all times, period. All fires should be extinguished completely, thoroughly cold to the touch by drown, stir, fill, drown some more, stir some more, keep doing that until it is completely cold to the touch and there are no more hot embers. We've said it, and we've said it, and we've said it, so we hope that folks will start listening to us. Next, follow the restrictions that are in place. We do those restrictions as a region, both Apache County, Navajo County, our local city towns, the federal forest, state forest, as well as BLM, all go into restrictions together to make it as easy as we possibly can. Not all the language is the same, but we try to get as close as we can with the rules. But the restrictions are for everyone, both visitors and residents. We hear every year from our residents, that's for those lowlanders, flatlanders, whatever you want to call them, our visitors, they don't apply to me. Yeah, they do. We hear from our visitors, I don't live here, they don't apply to me. Yeah, they do. They apply to literally everyone. The example I like to use is if you were to go to London, you would not drive on the right side of the road just because that's where you're from. You would drive on the left. Rules apply to everyone. Last but not least, create a defensible space. As Councilmember Heisler said, that first little boundary, five to 10, 30 feet, whatever you, whatever fits your property the best, because not all properties are created equal. Make sure that you have cleared that of all those combustible materials and any other items. Check your roof, your gutters, check for if you need screening under decks, eaves, all of those things. There's a simple way to do this. If you go to the NFPA, the AZEIN, Navajo County's website, you can see this diagram in so many places, and it will help you get your property defendable, defensible. All right, so you've heard a lot from me, and now it's time for you to hear a few words from my partners.
Can I ask you a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
Runoff, please. I know I've asked you this every year, I think, but I just want to make sure for the benefit of the public, if you have signed up for Navajo County Ready, you are always on that list.
Yes. I don't delete anybody until they ask me to delete them.
Okay, that's the answer that I, I knew you were going to give me, but I just wanted everybody to hear.
I appreciate that, and it is only about a five-minute registration. You can do that yourself. You can call my office. The number is on our website. I will help you absolutely. If you have an access and functional need, we do ask, not the specifics of your diagnosis or anything, but if you have that, that gives us a little bit of a heads-up if we might need to have some resources head your way, or to help you make a plan with friends, neighbors, et cetera.
Okay.
So yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question for Katrina? Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you. I'll let them duke it out. Who wants to come first?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Conrad Looney. I'm the Assistant Chief of Operations with Timber Mesa Fire. And first off, I wanted to start with just telling you a little bit about our organization, and then go into a few other pieces and a little bit of a call. So Timber Mesa Fire District is 216, covers 216 square miles with an additional ambulance transport service area of 440 square miles. We have approximately 34,500 residents in the district, and in the summer, as we all know, that swells to approximately 70,000 seasonal population. And we respond to approximately 8,000 calls for service per year, and a majority of those are medical, medical calls for service. The district responds to any emergency that threatens life or property. Timber Mesa and our automatic aid and mutual aid regional partners are dispatched by the Cholo Police Department, using the closest available unit model with appropriate capabilities to control the emergency or provide timely and effective service. We work closely with our neighboring fire departments and fire districts to provide the quickest response to any emergency, including wildfires. Timber Mesa maintains automatic aid agreements with the Pinetop Fire District and the Heber Overguard Fire District. And additionally, we have mutual aid agreements with all Arizona fire districts and departments, including Snowflake, Taylor-Snowflake Fire. We also work very closely with the Navajo County Emergency Management and our law enforcement agencies and partners on a regular basis. And then we also work closely with the Department of Forestry and Fire Management and the United States Forest Service to provide and receive support during emergencies, including wildfire incidents. And now typically, our department with Timber Mesa, we have our response model. So we have seven, seven stations, five of those are fully staffed. We have a three-battalion system, so an A, B, and C shift. Each battalion has 29 staff personnel per day. That staffs a one-battalion chief, four type-one engine companies, a truck company, five to six ambulances or rescues. Then we have additional apparatus available for response as needed. Three type-six brush trucks, two type-three brush trucks, three tenders, a scene support unit, and we just recently acquired four rescue boats for our local static water sources and lakes. So Timber Mesa and our partners are engaged in efforts to reduce the risk to our communities, including public education, training, fuel mitigation, and fuel mitigation programs. And we do appreciate all the work that our citizens do to help clean up their yards and also practice good mitigation efforts. But in our assessment, wildfire still remains the number-one overall threat to life and property in the White Mountains, as you all know. Our communities have been fortunate in the last two decades to avoid another rodeo Cheresky fire that, but we must not become complacent. We must remain vigilant. As this wildfire season approaches, I challenge each citizen, community leader, governmental, political bodies, to seek opportunities to engage in proactive efforts to prepare for the challenges each wildfire season may bring, such as defensible spaces around homes, hardening homes, to the effects of fire and fire embers, enrolling in Ready Navajo County, following the recommendations of Ready, Set, Go, and firewise programs. So with that, for more information, please visit ours or any of our partners' websites or their social media pages, and I believe that together we can make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Conrad, any questions? Comments? Okay, next up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to take a little bit of your time. I've got some data for you as well, but my data is slightly different because I think you know our organization. What I'm going to talk about is why is this important? Obviously, you as policymakers make decisions at your council meetings that impact the community, and the sense of community is important. As Cap mentioned, this Fire Restrictions Coordination Group brings all the stakeholders together, and we have a unified message that we communicate to our communities. This is very unique. You may not know this, but a lot of the folks that talk to us about what we do here is unique to the state of Arizona and to this community. There are no other coordination groups doing what we do here to have a unified message regarding wildfire and fire restrictions and have that sense of community. So why now? As you know, our forests have been mismanaged, and we like to blame the forest often because that's where a lot of our fire comes from. However, the wooies, the wildland urban interfaces are growing as well. In the last 10 years, and as an example, we've seen population increases one and a half times. So where you would see about 100 residents per square mile, it's now 250 residents per square mile moving into the wooey. So we've got more life and property that are at risk from these wildfires that exist in our areas. As you know, you've probably heard whether you are a believer in climate change or not, that's obviously your opinion. There is something going on, and now there is science to support, not necessarily climate change, but what's causing some of the catastrophic wildfires that we see, and it's called, it's called an increasing vapor pressure deficit. 2021 is an example. I was on the August Complex Fire in California. It was deemed the largest wildfire in California's history at over a million acres. That was an unprecedented year. Because of this vapor pressure deficit, the predictions are in 2030, 2040, we will see off-the-chart catastrophic wildfire, and those of us that are practitioners are going to say again, this is an unprecedented year. So how do we help? How do you help as policymakers? As you know, this council many, many years ago was very proactive and created a healthy forest initiative ordinance that required property owners to do things to their property to help reduce firewise or fire wildfire risk. That's just one step. A couple of the other things that I wanted to talk to you about is we now know that individual treatments don't make a difference. We've got to have better strategies, coordinated efforts with all of our partners in applying mitigation. In other words, the science is now telling us that we've got to get clusters of about 30%. So in your community, as an example, Counselor Smith, 30% of those continuous properties have to be treated to have an impact and reduce or increase survivability. If we do these one-offs, we're not hitting the mark. So we've got to have better strategies in getting more of our community members engaged. The other piece of that is what the fuel mitigation itself isn't going to work by itself. As Chief Looney mentioned, we've got to do home hardening. That's where you come in. It's those policies that as we look at new developments or individual remodels that we're encouraging the property owner to use fire-resistant materials to help that property stand alone on its own, along with those defensible spaces. One other thing that I wanted to talk to you about is the insurance problem, and you've probably heard this if you haven't experienced it yourself. We're fortunate in that we can still get homeowners' insurance, but it's at a cost. What we're hearing is some people are seeing 30 to 50% increases in their premiums to maintain homeowners' insurance because we live in a wildland urban interface. This is becoming a significant problem across the West, and I can tell you that Chief Chevalier and myself are working with the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association to develop a coalition to address the insurance industry, to figure out how we can demonstrate to them that we've got boots on the ground that have made a difference. Between Timber Mesa, Navajo County, Heber Overguard, and the Pinetop Fire District, we have treated well over 1,500 acres of individual property within our respective communities. Along with those treatments that occur in the forest, we've made a difference in the community. We're certainly far from over. We've got a lot of work that we need to continue to do, but I think we can justify to the insurance companies that with ordinances like the Town of Pinetop Lakeside have in place, future development improvements, fuels mitigation, and the work that we've done on the ground, we can be a resilient community when the next major wildfire comes through our community because it's not if, it is when. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions because I could talk all day long, and I know you have other business to conduct this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you for all that information. Next up.
Sorry, a whole online list of individuals want to come talk about the topic. I think that brings value to the importance of what we're trying to discuss. Madam Mayor, thanks for letting me say a few words. Council, thank you. I just want to give a shout-out to Keith Johnson, Matt Patterson, the police department, Tony, such a great staff to work with on a regular basis. It's awesome to hear about the proclamation for Public Works. At any time we call Matt, he's there, and his team is there, and they do fantastic work. And so I just want to say I appreciate everything that the town does for us as a fire district and the community. Add to the topic of wildfire, we've heard from about a response piece of what our capabilities are. We heard about from a policy perspective what the town council might be able to help us with to try to enforce some pieces to help the community recognize. I'm here to say, hey, community, let's don't get complacent. We saw some cool graphics up here about the risk this year. The risk is, might be just a little bit lower according to those graphics, but I promise you the risk isn't going away. The risk is true, the risk is here. We have a tremendous amount of moisture out there right now. It's nice, and we got awesome rain last night, and what does that do? That helps grow the grass. That grass is going to dry out with the winds. We're looking at 40 mile-an-hour wind gusts on Friday. Those are fine fuels, those are going to dry out, and those are the carrier fires. And it doesn't just have to be a wildfire that's going to push this. I know Councilmember Heiser can speak to this right now. He was the incident commander of a recent structure fire that we had in White Mountain Lakes community. It was at a large condominium condo apartment complex. We ended up burning about four of those units, two major damage. Fortunately, maybe there was a lake behind it that caught all that ember cast. That next fire of a similar type nature might not have a lake behind it that's going to catch that ember cast, and it doesn't matter if we're in June where the risk is a high. That can happen in January when we have those, those, that five-foot barrier that Katrina's talking about around the house where there's cushions, there's, there's the carpet rugs on top of the back porch. That is, it's going to be another carrier fire. That's where those embers are going to land, and that fire is going to spread. And so while we talk about our response, which we believe we have a pretty robust system, it's not always going to be 100% adequate. It's a busy time of year coming in the summertime, and our units are going everywhere. Policies are fantastic, but I'm here to urge the community to help us out. We need your assistance. If you, if you need to learn more about firewise, reach out to any one of the fire agencies, reach out to the county. We'd love to come out and help do an assessment. There's programs out there, of course, through grants or clean-sweep projects where they might exist to help remove material, but we really need the community to jump on board and really back us through this process because this is our home. This is where a lot of us grew up. Some people are moving here, and they really enjoy this area. We need them to jump on board to make sure this place is going to be here sustainable for all of our kids, grandkids, whatever it is, long into the future. So I just want to urge the community to, to jump on board with us. I feel like we're saying the same thing over and over again every single year, but it's a real topic, and we've seen it in Paradise. We've seen it all, Paradise, California, multiple communities where we saw major impact. We don't want that here. So please, as a, as a region, jump on board with us, follow us, let's make this thing a nice, sustainable community. Thanks again to the town for everything you do to support the fire districts and the community with. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You said that very well, very well. Any questions for Chief Charlie? Any questions for Chief Charlie? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just make a couple of comments. So this Saturday, there's a Firewise training in Payson that I'm sending our building official to. If anybody else wants to join that, it's free. And another thing is, we recently updated our building code to the 2018 IRC/ICC, and because of that, it actually almost doubled our ISO rating from nine in residential and commercial to five in residential and four in commercial.
Thank you, Jeremiah. We're all trying. We're all part of this puzzle, I think. Anyway, thank you all for coming. We do appreciate it. We look forward to those calls and hope that we don't have to have fire restrictions, but we will all listen when we do. So thank you very much. We're going to move on then to item D6, which is a quarterly update from the Humane Society of the White Mountains. Josh Smith, I'm sorry, Executive Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having me, Steph. I'll try and make this quick. I just have a few stats for you. So we had, since January, we've had 71 dogs come in from the town and 37 cats from the town of Pine Top Lakeside. That puts the total from the town at 108 animals that we've had come in in the past four months. But we've also had a total of 230 animals come into the shelter in the past, well, in four months. We also put in our first report for the Arizona Pet Plate Spay and Neuter Grant. And so, so far, we have been able to spay or neuter 265 animals with this grant monies. Let's see, 130 of those were dogs and 135 were cats. We are very close to running out of those grant monies. It was, as I've said in previous meetings, it was $20,000 this year, which is double anything we've ever gotten before, and we're already almost out quite early. So really helping the community, and this is anybody in the White Mountains with a personal animal that we're getting spayed and neutered. We did do very well on our Arizona Gives. I know I kind of gave you guys an update on that the last time I was here, but we ended up, our goal was $30,000, we ended up with $31,620. So we did very well this year. It was all due to my staff. They did an amazing job writing different documents and whatnot and getting it all submitted. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I can answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Josh? What's the date for Happy Tales?
August 24th.
August 24th.
Yeah. We're ramping that up, and we should have our summer raffle stuff, tickets being sold soon.
And will you have the donation collection centers similar to previous years?
That's our goal. The donation center should still be up by Safeway in Pine Top here. They told us that if they had a space available, it was ours. So I just have to reach out to them. July is when we usually open that up.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Josh? We'll move on then to item D7. This is a public hearing, discussion, and consider adopting ordinance number 24-471, approving a zoning amendment Z88 from R14 to MH4 for the zoning map of the town of Pine Top Lakeside. Amending the zoning for 1.17 acres for APNs 311-34-007A and 007B. Jeremiah.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor Abus, members of the council. On April 11th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and voted 5-1 to recommend partial approval of the zoning amendment. The commission recommended approval of only one of those parcels, APN 311-34-007B. And the staff recommendation was to approve both parcels for rezoning to eliminate spot zoning requests and align with existing uses along Poplar Drive. As submitted by the property owner, the request is to amend zoning at 2558 along East Poplar Drive from R14 to MH4. Request is for the property owner to install a manufactured home. R14 precludes the installation of manufactured homes. For context, this neighborhood is an assortment of zoning and legal nonconforming uses, such as RV parks and manufactured homes. The area along Poplar is a mix of C1 to the south, R3 to the west, and R14 after Phipps Drive along the northern side of Poplar to the east end of the street. There's our Arlo zoning. There's also a planned unit development to the north along Royine Drive. It's kind of just a hodgepodge of everything along there. R14 zoning, as identified within 1728.10, states, "The purpose of this zone is to conserve and protect single-family residential development in areas that are suitable and appropriate, taking into consideration existing conditions, including present use of land, present lot sizes, future land use needs, and the viability of public utilities." However, that was not the case with Poplar. It's evidenced by the sheer quantity of manufactured and legal nonconforming uses within the neighborhood. Furthermore, 1728-0208 permitted use specifically disallow mobile manufactured homes. If we were to inventory the existing use within the immediate vicinity, we'd find predominantly manufactured and RV parks on Poplar. The zoning needs to adequately reflect the situation, and it needs to reflect the situation of reality. There are many encroachments within the setbacks. In a perfect world, the zoning would reflect this and contain a mix of MH4 and RVP. However, this would require an amendment to the general plan and the zoning map. MH4 zoning would allow the applicant to proceed and match the surrounding character on Poplar Drive. General plan land use element shows this as medium-density parcels with 1 to 4 dwelling units per acre. MH4 has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, same as R14. Therefore, the request aligns with the general plan density classification. The general plan also has several land use goals, one of which is preserving and enhancing the community character. The character of Poplar consists of many manufactured homes. There are multiple legal nonconforming manufactured homes in the applicant's immediate neighborhood to the east. The general plan also has several objectives and policies, including creating a strong sense of community. The council is familiar with the affordable housing crisis within our community. One way to create a strong sense of community is to provide affordable housing options in appropriate areas to our citizens, and manufactured homes are considerably more affordable than site-built homes. The general plan also has various implementation measures. One of these measures is to promote the reduction and elimination of nonconforming land uses. One method of eliminating nonconforming uses is to mend the zoning to adequately reflect the reality of the current use and make them conform to an accurate representation of the characteristics of the neighborhood. Furthermore, the applicant owns multiple parcels, so the request would not be considered spot zoning if the council approved both parcels as MH4. The surrounding land use is a mix of low-density, medium-density, high-density, planned development, and commercial zoning. Proposed use is similar to other uses along Poplar Drive. The zoning amendment would change underlying zoning from R14 to MH4. Of note, no one on Poplar opposed the zoning amendment at the commission hearing. The signatory of a signed opposition letter lives over 300 feet away and could not see this from his property or on the way to their property. For spot zoning to be permissible, common law in the Supreme Court of the United States has determined that there is a three-pronged test used, as was in the Dyersville Court, and it must be applied. One, whether the new zoning is germane to an object within the police power. Two, whether there is a reasonable basis for making a distinction between the spot-zoned land and the surrounding property. And three, whether the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. By identifying and developing rules to address spot zoning, courts have sent a message to the local officials that they need to regulate responsibly and consistently. So my recommendation is that the town council approves Z88 to the zoning map of the town of Pine Top Lakeside for both parcels, APN 311-34-007Alpha and 311-34-007Beta, currently addressed as 2558 East Poplar Drive, containing 1.17 acres. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. So is there any questions? And the applicant is also here. Sergio, if you want to come on forward. Do you think that...
Thank you, Jeremiah. Hi. Any questions for Jeremiah first?
I do.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just tell me again. I mean, I think I understand, but the difference between R14 and MH4, as far as how many structures can be on that property? What are we looking at, the difference? Identical? Okay.
Yeah, and the size of the property is the same. That's why there's no request for a general plan amendment before you guys tonight.
Okay. The only difference then is MH4 allows for manufactured homes.
Correct. Still allows for site-built homes. It just does not preclude manufactured.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm familiar with that area, and I drove by there again today just to look at it. I'd like to know why the commission split it. I mean, what was their reasoning for doing that?
I believe the reasoning was that, and I don't agree with it, but I think the reasoning was that they felt that that parcel would, specifically was closer to the parcel that already has manufactured legal nonconforming, although the applicant owns both of the parcels. I think that was the driving force behind it, that, and they felt that this area would develop in the future to something else that it never has been in the past. So I think it was more of an aspiration to what it wanted to be, and maybe that's where the original zoning came from of R14. But R14 is more typically found in neighborhoods like Wonderland Acres or some others off the top of my head. What is it? Willen Hills is also R14, neighborhoods of that character. And there are some to the north where the person that was complaining has that, it would fall into that. But this neighborhood, it doesn't. It should have never been zoned there. There's basically a whole mess of zones in there, and honestly, I wish it would all be rezoned, but I only have one person here tonight. And I actually spoke to Mr. Martinez's neighbor, and he also wanted to do something similar. So we may hear from him in the future. I was hoping that it could come in together, and then the request tonight would not be to change both of his properties, but just one and the neighbors. But what I would like to see, honestly, is that whole street MH4 and RVP. It makes more sense for, you know, if you were to inventory what's actually there, it makes sense.
Yeah, I would agree with you with what's there. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Could I ask just one? So the one person who complained, where do they live?
They live back behind Royine, which is the planned unit development. And the street is actually named, the street is actually named after his family. Do you know the name of that street? Phipps? It's back off of Phipps, further. But yeah, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but the street's named after him, basically, and his family's lived there for a long time, and they have an HOA back there, and it is nicer homes, but the only way that they would ever see Mr. Martinez's home is if they got lost and missed their turn. That's the only way they would see it because there's an entire neighborhood between where they live and where Mr. Martinez lives.
Thank you.
Can I answer everything? Okay. Mr. Martinez, would you like to say anything additional?
No.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, so if there are any members of the public that would like to address us on this, now is the time. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any council discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion.
Counsel Heisler.
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-471, approving zone change Z88, the zoning amendment from R14 to MH4 for the zoning map of the town of Pine Top Lakeside, amending the zoning for 1.17 acres for APN 311-34-007Alpha and 311-34-007Bravo.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. To approve this ordinance is our further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Martinez. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate all your work on this. Okay. We'll move on then to item D8. Information, discussion, and consideration of resolution number 24-1709, accepting a right-of-way dedication agreement and dedication deed of APN 212-65-006 Porter Mountain Fellowship to provide consistent secondary access for emergency services to Blue Ridge Elementary School. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Well, first off, I'd like to thank you guys for the applaud. I'm very thankful to work with the staff I have. I have great men and women that work with us, so thankful to be part of that, part of you guys. All right. Onto the business that we have tonight. So the Porter Mountain Road project that we have been working on for years. Multiple years ago, I met with different owners, and they talked about giving us access. When the project actually got funded, and I went back to talk to the owners, they'd already developed a plan and was ready to move forward with some improvements out there on Commerce Drive. They no longer wanted to allow access for the secondary access into the school. So that kind of left us hanging. We needed to find another option. So we looked at different parcels. We reached out to all the owners on Commerce Drive for our emergency access, or our second emergency access to the school district. The Porter Mountain Fellowship was the only one that was willing to come forth and allow us to build the road through their land onto the school's land to add that secondary emergency access that we wanted to add at the school. So that is what the agreement is in front of you. It's kind of interesting because the limit for the money is actually under keys amount. However, you guys still have to approve the right-of-way agreement, so that's why we bring it to you tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Any questions for Matt?
Maybe. So just to be clear, I mean, normally for the amount of money that's being spent, it wouldn't have to come before council, but the right-of-way has to come before. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Counsel Heisler.
I move to approve resolution number 24-1709, accepting the right-of-way dedication agreement and dedication deed from Porter Mountain Fellowship SBC over parcel number 211265006 for the purpose of providing access for emergency services to Blue Ridge Elementary School, and acknowledge that the town will maintain this portion of right-of-way as part of the Porter Mountain Road Improvements Project, and authorize Town Manager Keith Johnson to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the right-of-way dedication agreement and dedication deed.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt. And they're still scheduled to start this project tomorrow or Monday?
Two days from now, yeah.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. That concludes our business tonight, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.